Good evening. I'm David Assad, the chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the city of Fall River. It's 6:00 PM on Thursday, July 21st, 2022. We are meeting at one government center in the first-floor hearing room. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, Section 20, subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Fall River Government TV, Craig Salvador, is recording both the video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now, and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. Our recording secretary this evening is Nina Kruger, the lady to my immediate right. Present this evening are permanent members John Frank, James Corkins, Dan DuPere, and alternate members Ricky Sahady and John Sylvia. Also present is the city engineer and acting overseer of the Planning Department, Dan Aguirre, the gentleman to my far left. I believe you're still acting. I don't think it's...
I am.
You are. Okay. I just want to make sure if you've got the official title, let's use it. Nina, have all petitions to be considered been properly advertised and all interested parties notified? In accordance with the rules and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A is amended.
Yes.
I declare the July 21st, 2022 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the city of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the board, including the petitioners, abutters, anyone in support or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the chairman. The board's rules and regulations direct the board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this board is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the city of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use which is the subject of the petition before the zoning board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after a decision of the board has been made. For example, there is a City Ordinance 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the city clerk's office or from the planning department. I remind everyone that the building inspector is the zoning enforcement authority, and you are here this evening because the building inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the city of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The City Charter, Section 9-18, mandates that all multiple-member bodies develop and adopt rules or policies for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizen input on zoning board specific matters at the end of this meeting. I disclose that an official copy of the four of the zoning ordinance is available at the city clerk's office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. I cannot participate in Agenda Item Number Two. Therefore, John Frank, clerk of the board, will chair that petition. Also, since Attorney Penis Salino is the attorney of record for Item Two and has two other matters, we will take Attorney Salino's matters out of order. Are there any questions before we begin? My understanding is that Agenda Item Number 04, Weathersfield LLC care of attorney... No, strike that. Agenda Item Number Three, Abbott &amp; Farnham LLC, care of attorney Thomas P. Koloran, 100 Weaver Street, Lot T315, has sent in a written request to table this matter to the next meeting. So if any of you are here for that matter, the board will take Attorney Koloran's request, whether or not we will allow him to continue to the next meeting or whether or not we'll make him go forward this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the request was for a meeting a few months away.
Oh, not next week.
Not the next meeting.
September. So it's not the next... It's not the August meeting, it's the September meeting. Do we have a date for that, September?
September 15th.
September 15th. All right. So is there anyone here that came out for that... For this... That particular agenda item this evening? Okay. So the board has to vote on whether or not we're going to allow them to continue it to September. So I don't... So, members of the board, do we have a motion to allow that petitioner to table this matter to the September 15th meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I hope we grant permission to table the matter until the September 15th meeting.
Okay. Jim Corkins makes the motion to table to September 15th. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, John Frank. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
John Sylvia?
Yes.
Ricky Sahady?
Yes.
Dan DuPere?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. Okay. So that one is tabled to September 15th, 2022. So we're not going to do anything with that this evening. We'll see you in September.
Thank you.
Okay. That being said, we'll start with Agenda Item Number Two, which is the Eric Santos matter, which I can't listen to. John Frank will chair it.
Good evening, members of the board. For purposes of the record, my name is Peter Salino. I represent the applicant petitioner in this matter. My office is at 550 Locust Street in Fall River.
Okay. This is Agenda Item Number Two, Eric Santos, 371 Sherman Street, Lot L170095, variance request to divide the existing parcel into two separate lots, leaving the existing single family on one lot and construct a single-family dwelling on the proposed second lot with a 8,520 square foot frontage of 118 and on Sherman Street and waving side... Looking to wave side, front, and rear setbacks. Attorney Salino.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. So the client and petitioner is Eric Santos. The property owner is Jared Santos. Jared Santos being two people from my right. Jared owns the parcel. He would like to divide the parcel to afford his brother Eric Santos to build a house on Lot Two, as shown on the plan. I think a lot of folks would be familiar with this because it's in a high-visibility area on the corner of Locust Street and Northeastern Avenue, and many people often wonder what's behind the wall. Is that a fair statement? So that's just to identify the property and parcel. So what is proposed is that Lot Two be created by dividing the parcel, leaving Jared with Lot One, Eric with Lot Two. The requested relief before this board this evening is as follows. In this zoning district, we need 12,000 square feet of area. The proposal, as Mr. Frank just read into the record, is 8,520 square feet. So we would need a variance for area. Next, the front yard setback required in this district is 25 feet, and per the plan, we only have 20 feet. So we would need a variance for five feet of front yard. The side yard setback is 15 feet, and we only have 10 feet. And finally, the rear yard setback is 25 feet, and we only have 20 feet. So we need waivers for all those various things. The plan does show a building envelope on it, which more or less overlays the tennis court. As far as the legal hardship here, it's got to be the shape. The lot as it exists, again, is bounded to the east by Northeastern Avenue, a sidewalk, and an existing wall. So there's really no way to meet the setback in a single-family district with a reasonably-sized house. The proposal is a Cape, and again, Eric grew up here, and his intention is to come back here and live on Lot Two. I'd also note for the board's attention that there are six letters of support in the file. We more or less canvassed the neighborhood to make sure that there was not going to be any large objection to the project. I'd submit to you that in Fall River, getting six letters of support is pretty sufficient in terms of showing that the neighborhood is not opposed to the project, and with that, I'm happy to take any questions from the board and answer anything that you may have.
Members of the board, any questions?
The house... Proposed house will be facing...
Facing Sherman Street, Mr. Corkins.
Sherman Street.
Yes.
The wall staying, right? All the way around?
Yes.
What's the... What's going on with Austin Street? Is that Lot One going to apply that?
That ultimately, Mr. DuPere, if this gets approved tonight, there would have to be a discontinuance of that, and then, yes, ultimately, that would be the goal because once the paper street is discontinued, the abutter owns to the middle, which would be appended to Lot One.
Right. So that's what the...
That's the intention, but we're not going to go through with the street abandonment if this doesn't get approved because, as you probably know, it's a bit of an undertaking to do that.
Right. No.
So I just have... It looks like half of... If the street does... If you guys are able to get the street, half goes to their property and the other half goes to the house on the other side?
That's right. That is correct.
Okay.
That's how we had it. That's correct.
The legal name for that is the derelict fee statute. Right, Judge? Derelict fee statute?
I'm asleep. Oh.
What's the... What's the proposed lot coverage for Lot Two?
I didn't see it on the plan.
Fair question. I don't either.
How size?
I just wondered because from the building envelope, it looks like you might have to ask.
You can do that in your head. Not on lot coverage. You know. Ask me just to... Not to put you on the spot, Jeff, but do you know the answer to that question? Mr. Tomlin drafted the plan.
I'm not sure what it is, but I... Well, I'm not sure where it will be. I know it's 100% right now with the tennis court.
Okay.
So we will be reducing it, but I don't know ultimately... I don't have a footprint for the house.
Would you be at or under the 25%? Or should you ask for relief on that as well?
I think we should ask.
We can ask. I would certainly ask right now.
Yep. Okay. So you want to also add lot coverage?
I think lot coverage has to be added, yes.
We don't have to re-list for that.
We don't know.
No.
We... Doesn't matter. We don't know a percentage.
Any other questions from the board? Anyone in the audience in favor of the petition? Okay. Just start from the back and name and...
Thomas Corey, K-H-O-U-R-Y. 477 Sherman Street.
Okay. And you're in favor?
Is it?
You're in favor?
Oh, I'm totally in favor, yes.
Counselor?
Linda Ferrera, 99 North Agon Street. I live in that neighborhood, and I just wanted to say you guys... Ladies, don't see me down here often, but I had been called by several of the neighbors who are in support of it and said, "I think they go through with this because it would be a good thing for the neighborhood and the people that live on the street." We did it on North Agon Street with the Hollyacs, let them split land, and they were right across from me. But wouldn't it be nice if families lived together like we did years ago and knew each other and we got along? So I'm just here to say I received several calls of people in that area that were in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Frank, could I...
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak. I appreciate Counselor Ferrera's sentiments. It's about family. It's about bringing family back together and being close and being able to live out our years together as family. It's a wonderful neighborhood, and everybody around us is in favor of the petition, is all I wanted to add.
Thank you. Anyone else in the back row?
Lisa Santos, 371 Sherman Street. I'm in favor.
Thank you.
Jayla Santos, 692 Wigan Street, Fall River.
In favor? Okay. Anyone else in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. As mentioned earlier, there are six separate letters here in support. They're all form letters that were signed. I'm not going to read every single letter, but I'll give the names for the record. We have Erica Warsley, I believe it is, 1626 Locust Street. Paul Pimentel, 403 Sherman Street. Rosemary Estrella, 366 Sherman Street. James Root from 300 Eastern Avenue. Paul Corey, 386 Sherman. It's like Wendy Correa, Eastern Avenue, 355 Eastern Avenue. Anything else? No.
He didn't...
I did. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Members of the board? Do we have any other questions? Anything else? No. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay. Seconded? All those in favor, starting with John?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Thank you, members of the board.
Petition is accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got two more.
Okay. Agenda Item Number Three, Kimberly Griffin, 4682 North Main Street, Lot X4, Lot Nine, variance request to construct a single-family home in an A2 apartment district, waiving frontage, front, side, and rear yard setbacks under Section 8635, which references our table of dimensional requirements.
Do you have that one?
This item will be a five-member board, and the alternate would be Ricky Sahady who's going to vote. Attorney Salino?
Thank you again for the record, Peter Salino, 550 Locust Street, Fall River, counsel to the petitioner, applicant. The applicant in this matter is Kimberly Griffin. She's here to my right. She owns the subject parcel. As you can see from the paperwork, the address of the parcel is 4682 North Main Street. It's in an A2 zoning district. The proposal is to demolish the existing single-family structure and rebuild for Kim and Sean Bartley, who's here in the audience, to live at. The waivers or variances requested relate to the frontage. Per the plan, we only have 80.41 feet, whereas 100 feet is required in an A2 district. The side yard setback, which would be the south on the plan or to the left on the plan, is 17.6 feet per the plan. 20 is required, and we have a potential issue of a rear yard setback from a footing of a proposed deck that would be 23.3 feet off the line, where in that situation, 30 feet is required. So I submitted to you in my petition that the hardship here is the irregular shape of this lot. To me, specifically carved out and caused by the fact that the southwest corner is not a 90-degree angle, I think that had that stone wall not been where it is and had that angle been a 90-degree angle, then the frontage issue is solved and the side yard setback is solved, and depending on the size of the deck, we may or may not even be talking about rear yard. I don't think this derogates from the intent of the bylaw. Certainly, it's consistent with the neighborhood. It's a mix of single and multifamilies, both on this side of North Main Street and on the other side of North Main Street. And again, just like to highlight that this is for Kim's use. This is not a flip, out-of-town person trying to create a lot and make some money. Kim wants to live here. She inherited this parcel through an estate... Was it your grandmother's estate?
Father's.
Through her father's estate. So ultimately, that's the request, to build a house on this lot.
What's being demolished? My understanding is there's an existing structure on it.
There is. There's a single-family structure there.
So the ancient single-family structure is being demolished, 21st-century new houses being put on.
Correct.
The footprint's not using the same footprint, but it's...
Just a little bit different, but it's very similar. And that proposal...
But in this A2 district, there was a single-family. We're replacing it with a single-family.
Correct.
And the dimensional requirements that we need, the specific variances...
Frontage, side, rear.
And dimensional, the entire area requirement. Percentage of coverage did we...
Area would be okay.
11,240, yes.
Yeah, so we're okay. And then lot coverage, the engineer has us at 28%, right? So we're less than the 30% coverage requirement.
I just want to make sure you get all the variances that we... The board acts on all the items that need to be acted on.
Appreciated.
Okay. Members of the board, any questions on this particular petition? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay. Members of the board, it's a pleasure. Dan, is there anything that we should know from you? Site plan review, certainly required as a condition.
Yeah.
So has the petitioner met the... Has the petitioner met the burden of 40A for the variant shape requirement, condition, and object?
Sorry.
If we think we have it, we have a motion to grant. If we think they haven't, it should be a motion to deny.
Mr. Chairman, motion to grant.
Ricky Sahady, motion to grant. Second, Dan DuPere. Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Ricky Sahady?
Yes.
Dan DuPere?
Yes.
Chairman Assad? Yes, that petition is granted.
Thank you.
Site plan review was a condition. Just to be clear, Ricky, you are... Just to be clear, Ricky, Nina asked the question. In your motion, it was site plan review was a condition.
Yes. That's just taken for granted.
Yeah, no, no. I just...
Required by ordinance.
Yeah, no. It may be required, but let's make it express.
It didn't come up on the one that prior that you were in here, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, but it's a requirement, especially for that one, yeah.
I just have a clarification question on the last one, too. You know, we put on there the amendment that Attorney Salino requested of lot coverage also to be added to it. I just want to make sure.
No, not this one.
Not this one. Prior one.
I was... He's wrong. All right. So that was number three. What's the next one for Attorney Salino? Number four. Christopher Fattato, 55 Laurel Street, Lot C2, Lot Two, variance/ special permit request to construct a two-story garage with an apartment above, waiving the use and setback requirements on a pre-existing nonconforming... Pre-existing nonconforming structure in a BL local district. The present use as a three-family is allowed in a BL district. However, if the relief is granted, the applicant needs relief to use the property as a four-family. Just to be clear, what's... There's not an existing structure present on a pre-existing nonconforming structure. It's a pre-existing nonconforming lot.
There is a structure, though, as a three-family.
No, no, there is a structure, but the construction of this garage and apartment is not on an existing structure.
That is correct.
It's a new...
It's a new structure that is attached to the prior structure.
It's not attached to the...
Oh, it is attached.
It is attached? Yes.
On this one?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So for the record, Peter Salino, representing Christopher Fattato, who's here with me to my right. Mr. Fattato owns the property at 55 Laurel Street. This one, to me, is a little bit interesting because we have a bunch of different things going on. As you see on the plan and the hash lines that are in pink, the southern portion of the property is in an A2 district, and the northern portion of the property, it's about two-thirds of the property, is in a BL district. So I also pled in the alternative for a special permit to increase the existing nonconformity. So talking about the variances first. If we look at the site as being a majority in a BL district, then we need variance for the unit count because in a BL district, you can have three units by right, but this additional apartment above the garage would be a fourth unit. So there would be a need for a variance there. If we, as a result of this construction or alteration, we lose the grandfathering on the structure known as 55, then I also think we need front and side setback relief in a BL district. And there is no lot coverage requirement in a BL district, so I'm just calling that out because I don't think that's an issue. I would be happy, Mr. Chair, if you want me to talk about the A2 component of it, but I think in that, the bulk of it's in a BL. The interpretation is that's what we should be focused on.
I think that's well settled, that the majority being when you have the division line, the majority being in the BL district, that's what's going to go.
Okay. So then, moving on to... Well, strike that. I shouldn't move on yet because I should talk about hardship, which is the location of the existing structure being five feet from the northerly property line and kind of hugging Laurel Street. I also asked the engineer to put on the plan the existing paved driveway and parking area, and as you can see, there's also a five-car garage on the site to the westerly side that hugs the property line. So the site is somewhat constrained in terms of its shape and what we can do on the site. And the intention, for the record, is that Mr. Fattato's daughter, who's here, intends to live in the apartment on the second floor. So to me, the hardship really is the existing impervious material on the site, as well as the structure itself and its location, the three-family structure and the garage itself. I don't think it derogates from the intent of the bylaw, nor do I think it's detrimental to the neighborhood for a couple of reasons. Number one, this mixed-use sort of concept is on both sides of the street. There are also six letters of support in the file for this, saying that they've looked at our plans and approve of the same. And then I'll turn, to keep within my three-minute threshold, turn to the special permit component under the bylaw. As you know, we can ask for a special permit to increase an existing nonconformity if the board finds that it's not substantially more detrimental than what's already there. I would submit to you that if we add one apartment and three garage parking spaces, it's not more detrimental. There are not going to be more cars on the street. They're going to traverse the existing driveway, go into the garage, park, and that should be it. So it's submitted that I think you can... I know you have to take two different votes, but I think we can look at it both ways, and I think there are good arguments for both a variance and a special permit to increase the existing nonconformity. Happy to take any questions.
Do you think if the board goes with a variance, you don't need the special permit?
That's correct. I checked both boxes intentionally.
No, I'm just asking the question.
Yes.
Because I think if the variance is granted, then it gives you everything you need. If not, and we go with a special permit, and I don't see how it rises to the level of a special permit, but there are four other great Western minds here on the board, so we'll figure out what's going to happen. All right. Members of the board, any questions?
Yes.
Yeah, John? No, go ahead, John, ask the question.
There's a reasonable-sized tree on the lot that you're probably going to tear down and put the garage there. Would there be a way of planting a tree behind the house or just giving funding to the city to plant a tree somewhere?
The tree is actually right in the front yard.
Yep.
So in that whole area there with the proposed... Were buildings, there's not a tree on that.
Yeah, there's on... Well, on your... At least how I look, did you tear it down?
Yeah, that's right in the front. Yeah, that's right in the front.
So, that would be on Laurel Street.
Right on Laurel side.
Oh, so is it the side lot?
May I come up and show you?
Sure.
Just have the question, the tree staying?
Tree staying, yes.
It's staying, alright, so this.
If you need another one, I'll plant another one.
So, if the tree's staying, that eliminates that question.
We had that backwards, we thought that was the back.
Yeah, this is the three-family, right here.
Alright, so the garages.
Those are the five garages right here.
The other garage is going behind the house?
Right in that space, yeah.
Oh, okay. And we have, and we have the statement from the petitioner that the tree is staying.
Sounds good.
Was it Dan who had a question?
Yeah, the existing, the five-car garage, is that for the three-family or?
Yes, yes, I have.
Is it being used by the?
Two of them, two are, and the other ones are, are being, are rented out.
And you have, where the, where the people in the three-family, where do they park?
They, in a, in a garage, first floor, he lives in a garage, I mean, sorry, he parks in the, has the garage spot, and the other has a, parks in a, in a road, right on Laurel Street.
And the, the proposed garage, is that, how many stalls?
Three, three.
Three stalls?
Yeah. So, I just figured having the parking underneath and, you know.
Daughter living upstairs, yeah.
Yeah, being right upstairs.
Make sure the car's shut off.
You're going to be able to accommodate at least eight off-street parking without question, right?
Oh, yeah.
Between the three-family.
Three-family and the single-family.
And the single-family, yeah.
So, if somebody want, if you're thinking about it, then make it a minimum of eight off-street parking as a condition. Whether or not the, the tenants or the, have, use it is another question, but at least have it, if that's something you're thinking about. Okay? Anything else, members of the board? John? Dan, anything we should know?
No, just that, if you decide to go the route of a special permit for some of it, the expansion of the non-conforming structure can be moved by a special permit, will be used to a four-unit, it would have to be done by a variance.
Yeah, no, my, my thought would be, I just think, I, I think it's cleaner and better for this particular project, doing it as a variance on all the items and, and, because the majority's in the BL district, bringing in the fourth unit in requires the variance, so.
And the board should know that a four-unit building is allowed in the adjacent A2 district?
It is, but unfortunately, it doesn't.
Correct.
Rise to the level. Okay. So, those are our, is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Yes, ma'am, will you identify yourself for the record, please?
Morelia Fattato.
Okay.
Christopher Fattato's daughter.
The other ones who live upstairs.
And her favorite.
Better be sure we have proper smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors up there, yeah, good. Anyone else in favor? Anyone opposed to this petition? Yes, sir, please identify yourself.
My name is Gil Branco, I own 45 Laurel Street. I'm the abbot, that would be right on the side of his property. I've owned my property for 37 years, and I read.
Oh, yeah, so you're, you're the abbot to the north of the property?
To the north. Correct, yeah.
Right on the corner of Dwelling and Laurel.
Correct, yes.
Yes.
So, when I read the proposal, I didn't really quite understand it, so I went to the planning board, and I looked at the, the blueprint, or, or the footprint, whatever you want to call it, and I, in my opinion, I've been there, like I said, I've owned the property for 37 years, I've got a neighbor that in 1997 built the house, which is an uncle to him.
Yeah.
And I had no issues with that. I just feel that he's going about just the wrong way. His building is going to, like, close off my lot, so I feel that it's going to depreciate my property. He's got a big enough lot, his lot is 11,413 square feet, which I feel, if he wants to do something like that, he should, he should get a variance to split the lot, because what he's basically doing is he's putting up a house, and he's, he's making like a, a breezeway from the three-family to this house, and he's calling it a, a four-unit, which I feel is unfair to us.
You've got the, you've got the northern boundary line, he's, the current existing 55-three-family exists where it is. He's adding this proposed two-story garage addition to the west of the property, just.
Which is right behind the house.
But, talk, tell me, or explain to the board, because I'm just trying to visualize your statement that it's cutting off your lot, how is it?
Oh, no, no, it's closing in my lot. In other words, my corner is like, that's opened up. In other words, it's not constricting, like most of the properties in the city. It's a, it's a unique piece of property, it's on a corner of my lot.
Your lot, you're on the corner, you face Laurel Street.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, I've got my parking lot in the back.
Yeah.
And looking over to his, his side, it's opened up with the five garages, and his house sits directly on a corner of his lot, which is close to my house.
Just like yours.
Exactly.
His house is situated the same way your house is.
Same thing, yes. But, the problem is, like, I don't have much space between my house and his house, so it kind of like closes in, so what he wants to, what he's proposing to do is going to close it in right to the end, so I get a little relief from his house over, and that's going to cut, that's going to stop, that's going to like, it's going to close this in.
Listen, I'm not advocating fences.
Okay, okay.
But, but I'm at, so, now I should probably have Attorney Salino answer. I'm going to ask the question. So, you're saying you're enjoying this view because this unencumbered view from the rear of your house into his lot? So, if he chooses to put a six-foot stockade fence along that, that, I guess it's the northerly boundary, that's, so it's going to be.
That would be fine.
No, 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 I'm just asking. Visually, you've got this open space, now he's going to put the, the fence up, and now, what he's putting, he's not, he doesn't have that, he's putting a fence, he's putting this two-story garage, and on the second floor of that garage is going to be an apartment.
Yeah, it's going to be pretty high.
Okay.
And, and my, my.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
My point is, his lot is huge, and he's putting everything on my side.
Because look on Google, where it's going to see it, you know?
No, no, we drove by, I mean, I, I, most of the board members have been by.
What I'm trying to say is, he's hugged, like, I'm the only one affected by this, and I've been at, we've owned that property for 37 years, I've got pride in my property. If you go by there, my house is really decent-looking, and I, I believe it's going to take away value from my property. If he wants to build a, a house, that's basically, what, he's got a, he's got a two-story garage underneath, with an apartment above, that's a house. That's what he's doing. And he's, he's calling the attachment to the three-family, it's a breezeway, I, I've seen the, the footprint.
The plan that's showing is it's connected to like.
Yeah, it's not, it's not attached. I mean, it is technically, because that's how he's trying to get around it, but, I mean.
I'm going to ask, Attorney Salino.
Yeah, if I may respond, so I don't think we're trying to get around anything. It's attached under the city bylaw, that's the definition of an attachment, okay? Number one. Number two, do you live in this property?
No, I don't, no.
Okay. So, you're here in front of the board complaining about view, but you don't actually live there?
I'm there every day, though.
But is the complaint view?
No, no, the complaint.
Okay, I thought the complaint to Mr. Chairman was the view.
No, the complaint, no, the complaint is, is blocking us in, like.
Okay.
The houses are not that far apart, the house is probably from this desk to that wall apart from mine.
Mm-hmm.
Now, he's going to make it that way all the way to the end of my lot.
Right.
Which, I don't, I mean, the houses were already there.
Right, right.
Which, which, to me, it's pretty damn close.
Okay.
So, now, he's going to, he's going to make it so that it's from the house all the way back, the same way. And I think that it's going to, it's going to take away from my property, I'm just being.
So, it's a value issue?
Yeah.
Okay.
Twelve. Okay?
And I believe I've, I've been.
No, no, I'm going through, so just let me go through this for a minute. So, the, the size of this lot, I think it's 11,424 square feet, is that correct, Attorney Salino?
Yes, yes, you are right, yep.
So, in this addition, you're, the side, and I'm, I'm going to call it a side yard, 12 feet?
Yes.
And in the BL district, side yard is 10 feet, so.
Correct.
If I'm correct, you're exceeding the side yard, even though the existing house is only five and a half feet away.
That is correct.
The rear, now, I guess I'll call that the rear yard.
Yeah.
The rear yard is.
Appropriate.
15 feet, and you've got the 15 feet there.
Correct.
So, that part of the dimensional stuff is correct.
Right.
The issue that you're, that he's confronted with, so, side yard, so that side yard next to your property, with the exception of the existing three-family dwelling, which is only five feet from the property line, he's proposing 12 feet, and what he really needs on that side yard is 10 feet, so he's going back two feet more than what's needed, if it was, if it was going to be allowed. The rear yard is 15 feet, and the rear yard, according to our bylaw, is 15 feet, so it meets or exceeds that. Really, the issue is if we, the number of units, because in this BL district, you can have three units as a matter of right, he's proposing to put this two-story garage attached to the building. And you saw the plan, Gil, you saw?
I, I looked at it quickly, I came to the planning board to take a look at it, because when I read it.
Yeah.
I didn't understand what he was attaching it to.
It looks like it's being attached to the house, is that correct?
Correct.
It's got a bulkhead, you know?
Yes.
Engineering-wise, I, I can't. The plan that we're looking at, if you haven't seen it, I mean, here's my plan, I'll look at it. It looks like it's going to be attached, as you said, some type of a walkway, with the garage underneath and the apartment upstairs. The dimensions of it are 20, I think 22 by 18, or 22 by 40?
Well, it's 40.
22 wide, 40 feet long.
Correct, yep.
Roughly, a rectangle.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know, it's, it's.
The house.
It is, I understand.
He split the lot, he, he wouldn't be able to get it that way, and it would be on the opposite side, which he has plenty of room. He doesn't want to give up any garages or anything. It's, it's just, I just feel it's unfair to me, because we've been there 37 years, and I, I just think it's unfair, that it all sits on my side.
Yeah, go ahead.
Be appropriate to hear from the city engineer.
All right, yeah, I'm going to ask, we'll, we'll get to you, but it's, I wanted, in that Mr. Branco loses there, I wanted to afford him the opportunity to speak, I wanted Attorney Salino to respond. Dan, what are your comments, if anything, on this particular project?
The only thing that I would add is that the structure itself and the size of it is completely allowable, as you were moving in that direction. Could actually build a bigger structure than was being proposed, could probably be a three-story building, I don't know what the height requirement is.
45.
And so, he could theoretically build a 45-foot-high addition to the, to the three-family, 10 feet from that property line, so he's not going to that size. I think the real issue is going from a three-unit to a four-unit. And I, I don't think there's been much of a concern from any of the abutters regarding that part of the relief, requesting relief. It's more about the structure and being closed in. So, the board should look at it at two different ways, once is the size of the structure and the location of it, and then two, the use from going to three to a four is really the meat of, of the relief being requested. Because he could, he could build a larger addition with the garage, and let's say, add rooms to the three-family, extending that entire width of the three-family straight back.
Straight back.
Making a much larger structure, and making a three, three, three units bigger than what they are.
And that would still be inconformity?
It would be, and it would actually, it would close him in even more visually, if that's the concern.
I mean, that's where I was going with the dimensions of the things. But, to do whatever, to do what he wants to do, he needs a variance, he needs, so he needs to meet shape, topography, soil conditions, that we don't have, we got, and again, with, shape of the lot, I think, is where it is, and the existing structure.
The existing structure, right.
The existing structure being the pivotal factor, and is there a hardship on the development or use of his property? If we think that, yes, he's met that, then maybe we should consider it, if we don't think he's met it, then it should be denied. So, let me see, so Gil, Branco's were opposed to it, was there anyone else opposed to it? Okay? Anyone else, so we're here in favor, opposed, discussion from the board, any further discussion?
I just want, may I?
Yeah, go ahead, please, go ahead.
Point of order. So, we're focused on the variance, but I also want the record to reflect that we pled for a special permit as well, and I cited in my petition 425 to extend, alter, change a non-conforming structure, so I think that also needs to be, there's no question that the three-family is non-conforming, so that needs to be part of the discussion.
So, under 86425, and under 48, Section 6, if you want to talk about extending or altering or changing a non-conforming structure, does it fit into any one of the exceptions? And if we do, we say, okay, let's talk about whether or not it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Right.
Than what's there. And you get to the special permit if we're going to extend, alter, or change a non-conforming structure.
Correct.
And that was where your attachment to the.
Is critical, right.
To 55, the existing saying, I'm going to expand or alter the structure.
Go two paragraphs up, though, you still have to deal with the use.
No, no, you still, no, you still, you may do that, but you still have to deal with the variance on going from the three to the four.
Right.
There's no, so, you, you may get to the analysis, that's why I said the variance would be the better way to go, but the analysis still has to be, yes, you may say, yes, you can have this proposed two-story addition, because you're doing it under a special permit, but to get to the fourth unit, you need the variance to make it work. That's the analysis that the board has to think about. But, yes, you are.
Okay.
We'll make sure we have that in the record for you.
Just, had, had any consideration been given to building the apartment over the existing garages?
Did you ever think about that?
So, what is your reason for wanting the alternative structure?
Can the current garage just support an apartment above?
Never, no, no, you have to read.
Structure.
Yeah, structurally, I don't think. It's so old. I, I was raised over there, my, my godmother lives next door, and my grandmother used to live on a three-family on the side of the other house there, and they used to call wash. So, I mean, I've been there my whole life, I bought the house off my godmother, and I just kind of want to stay there in the neighborhood, and have my daughter go there.
If it can't be done, it can't.
Yeah, if it can't, I understand, yeah.
He lives in Dyne?
Yep, that is a true statement.
No, no, so, I don't, where he lives, he owns the property, this is the property that's in place, the, whether or not, for example, Mr. Branco, whether you've been there 35 years or 10 minutes, you're the record owner of 45 Laurel Street, so you have the right to come before the board and tell us what your concerns are, just as this gentleman, whether he lives in Dyne or in Fall River, I got it. The issue about the daughter, we all know, and I know Attorney Salino knows, that those types of personal issues about the daughter, the grandmother, the mother-in-law, don't rise to the level of hardship in terms of what the board needs to hear to grant a variance. It's really with the shape of the lot and the use of the property. So, it's up to the board. Have, has he met the burden, has he not met the burden? Do we want to grant the variance, do we want to deal the two pieces? Yes, the special permit, that yes, he can expand, it's not more detrimental, but do we want to grant a variance to add the fourth unit? So, those are like the two pieces that need to be done. If we say we're going to grant, if we say, no, he hasn't met the burden, then it's all.
And can we talk about lot coverage again? You said lot coverage is not a factor because it's a BL?
That's right, there is not coverage requirement.
Lot coverage, there's nothing in the BL district, and if we're going with the BL as being the control, and I think you have to, because the majority of it is in the BL district, that's what's going to control.
Okay.
So, motion to grant, motion to deny, has they met the burden, have they not met the And the lot isn't big enough, 11,424, he's got the three families, so he's going to need 8,000 square feet to say, oh, I'm going to carve it up and have sufficient frontage and get two lots out of it. Wouldn't have enough left to do it. Not just trying to be innovative in terms of how else you can accommodate it and say, put a, put a house, split the lot, put a house, but.
How much?
But that's not before the board, I'm just thinking outside the box. Ricky, Dan, John, Jim?
I'll make a motion to grant.
Dan Dupere, motion to grant. Do you have a second on Dan's motion to grant?
I'll second with a condition of no, no further sub, no further subdivision.
No further subdivision. It's connected to the house, it's not standing in the, I got it. I'm just, I just want to be clear that you know it's connected.
Because it will then become, yeah.
I got it. No further subdivision, okay? Okay? So John Frank seconds it with no further subdivision. Dan, do you want to modify your motion to include that?
Yeah, also parking, make sure that we have put in there.
Eight, minimum eight off-street parking spaces?
Both structures. To cover the both structures.
Yeah, to cover the both structures. So you've got 2, 4, 6 there and on the, eight, so eight, minimum eight off-street parking spaces. Okay? No further subdivision, minimum eight off-street parking spaces. So that's the, that's your motion, that's seconded by John Frank. Any discussion on the motion? Anything else? None? Okay? Ricky Sahady?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Chairman Assad?
No.
The petition is granted, four to one. You got the variance, Peter? Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, there were one, two, three, four, five, five letters of support that are made part of the record. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for taking me out of order, and thanks, everybody, for waiting for me.
Okay. So Peter Salino's done. Now we can start with agenda item number 01. Paul M. Levek Jr., 79 Reservoir Street, Lot L 764. Variance request to build a house addition, waiving setback requirements in an S single-family district. This is the one that, yes?
Get that one, Jim.
Good evening, sir. You identify yourself for the record, please, and tell us what you'd like to do.
Paul Levek, 79 Merzibor Street, Fall River. Start out by apologizing for missing last month's meeting. I had something come up that
That's fine, I've covered you, you're here, so tell us what you want to do.
I'm looking to build, tear down my current attached single, one-car garage, turn that into a two-stall with an addition above, which would be attached to the upstairs of the house. There would be no access to the house from the garage, it would be through the upstairs of the garage.
Existing house on reservoir?
Yes.
You're going to put a proposed two-story addition, 26 by, I'm trying to think, 26 by 26?
Yes.
26 by 30.
Yeah? Oh, 30, I got it way over there. Proposed foundation, okay. Access is going to be off, proposed, you're going to put the proposed paved driveway.
Correct.
It's going to be attached to the house.
Yes. There's currently a single-car garage there with a single driveway. That's going to go away.
That you're getting, that's being raised in this new?
Correct. Either way, that has to get raised, that garage is just falling apart.
No, no, I mean, just, so that garage is going in this new proposed?
Yes.
And in this district, which I believe is an S district, your side yard, so I guess it's going to be side yard, side yard. You've got nine feet, and you need 15 feet, so you need a, you need a six-foot variance on that side yard.
Correct.
Well, area is 12,320, so it's a conforming lot size.
Is the, is the, is the roof line going to continue the roof line in the existing house? Is it going above the existing house?
It's going to be perpendicular to, the roof line currently faces east and west.
Oh.
And the garage roof line will face north and south.
Okay. I guess, all right, better question. Same height as the existing, or is it going to be higher?
It'll be a little bit higher. The current garage roof is
It's not going to be greater than 35 feet.
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Okay? Ricky? Dan?
Mr. Chairman, just one thing. I mean, you say you don't believe so. I mean, are you certain that it won't be 35 feet?
I'm not 100% certain, no, I'm not. I don't have the
Well, you don't have any idea? The reason why I'm asking you is I don't want you to build 39 feet and you're coming, you get a cease and desist. So if you have an idea of how far high 35 feet is, that's what you can
Yeah, I don't have the drawing in front of me, I don't
You do understand, though, that it would be a cease and desist if it exceeds 35 feet?
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
So provided it's not going to go above 35, it'll be else? Okay.
If the board, if the board says
Right.
Yeah, but if he doesn't know, I might as well guess.
That's what I was asking about the roof line. It looks like, it's a raised ranch, so it looks like it's going to, your top, your living level is going to go straight across, so you're not going to be stairs up and down either way to go into the upper level above the garage.
The upper level above the garage, I think there'll be four or five steps going up to that.
Should be about five feet higher than the existing structure. Because you've got to get clearance in the garage.
Yeah, that's
You're basically adding, this is staying at this height and then adding
Another full story, but that's not going to go more than 35.
That's not going to go more than 35 feet. Okay? So, those are the, Dan, anything that we should know about?
No, just that, on the plan, it specifically requests lot coverage variance, side yard. It does not request a front yard, which is 25 required, and this will be 20, in line with the existing structure, but you may want to deal with all of the setback relief for all of them.
Okay? So we can certainly grant, if we decide to go, that we can grant all those items to make sure it conforms and have the variance that deals with all of it.
Or no closer to the street than the existing structure. If you don't want to put a specific number on it.
Okay. All right, is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Members of the board, what do you want to do?
I'll make a motion to grant.
Motion to grant.
Second.
Second. Ricky Sahady? Conditions, John, about
Wait, waving lot coverage, side yards, front yard in line with the existing structure.
Okay? And that's your, that's your motion? All right, second way, Ricky?
Fine.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing not, Ricky Sahady?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes, okay. That petition is granted with those conditions.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item number 02, South Coast Hospital Groups, Inc., 38 Hillside Street, Lot M 168. Variance request to construct an off-site, two-story, 442 space parking garage in a G general district, waiving all zoning requirements. Decision modification request. Good evening, sir. You identify yourself for the record, please, and tell us what you'd like to do.
Yes, good evening. For the record, Steve Giosa with Civil and Environmental Consultants, 31 Bellows Road, Rainham, representing South Coast Hospital Group. As the board probably recalls at the last meeting, you granted a special permit for a parking garage located to the south of the main hospital complex off Prospect Street. And in reviewing that, the city engineer, city planner decided, in looking at it, that it was more appropriate to also include a variance for this site for setbacks. When you look at the diagram that I put on the board here, we have placed the proposed parking garage, which is to help us alleviate parking issues within the neighborhood, so we think the overall construction of the garage does meet the intent of the zoning by not being more detrimental to the neighborhood and actually improving the conditions in the overall neighborhood by pulling a lot more vehicles off the public way. And what we've done is we've set the garage close to the hospital side or the north side of the subject property, approximately eight feet from the sideline of Prospect Street. And we've also offset the structure to the east so that it's eight feet from the sideline of Hanover Street. And the reason we've done that is, and the reason we require a variance in this case, is that, the two reasons, unique shape and topography on this particular site. The shape constrains us in a north-south direction. We have to meet the zoning requirements for minimum dimensions on a parking stall and access aisles for public safety going through the site. And that sets the overall width of the existing parking lot and also the overall width of how we set the parking structure. And what we wanted to do is, in the north-south direction, maximize the green space on the south side, where we do have residential properties. So by allowing the variance from the setback to Prospect Street, that would allow us to maximize that green space on the south side adjacent to the closest residential properties. The same thing in the east-west direction, but we also have a topographic relief on the far west side, the topography drops off. And by offsetting the structure more to the east side, that allows us, A, to maximize green space adjacent to our residential neighbors to the west, but it also avoids that topographic drop and works more with the natural features of the land, avoids major grade changes to accommodate that topographic feature. So, we're looking for relief for setback this evening, and we have intentionally offset to minimize impacts on the residential structures in the neighborhood. And we think the intent of the zoning ordinance in this case is to provide proper buffers to adjacent streets, and we think that this will accomplish that as well as create additional buffering to the residential properties. Be happy to answer any questions from the board of the audience at this point.
Okay. So, the building setbacks, the itemized items that you need relief for?
So the required front yard setback is 12 feet, we are looking for eight feet.
So you need eight, okay.
So that's a four-foot deviation from the subject parking setbacks for the structure. And depending on how you view the front yard, we are obviously a unique parcel with streets on all four sides. If you view them as all four sides being front yards, then we would need relief from 12 down to eight. If you consider Hanover Street a side yard setback, then we're looking for relief from the side yard requirement of 10 feet down to eight feet. So, I think to play it safe, we'd look for, looking at them all as front yards, and that those are the two sides that we would require relief for this structure.
You know, that's all I'm coming up with, is just two?
Yes.
Two items for relief?
That's correct.
Okay? All right. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Members of the board, any questions specific to this project? Dan, is there anything we should know about it?
Just procedurally, so you understand what happened, when the petition was presented to you at the previous hearing, it was, the boxes for special permit and variances were checked to deal with the use of the garage, which you dealt with appropriately as a special permit. But when we were writing the decision, we found that no vote was taken with regards to the required variance regarding the setback issue. So this is just to modify your previous approval, special permit is one section.
We're not modifying it, we will issue a separate variance decision, correct?
You can do it either way.
Okay.
Yeah. If you want to issue a separate variance, it was advertised completely, everyone was notified, so it can be acted upon as
I think if we grant it, we should do it as a separate variance with a separate recording.
We didn't want to get it to the point of site plan review and then have to alert the applicant that they didn't get the relief with regards to setback, so this was the appropriate way to handle it.
So let's make sure we give them what they need, if that's what we want to do.
Okay? Granting approval.
So Jim Corkins, motion to grant. Second? Dan Dupere, second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing not. Ricky Sahady?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. Okay? Thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Agenda item number 04, Weathersfield LLC, care of attorney Arthur D. Frank Jr., 158 Bedford Street, Lot N 442. Special permit request to develop 35 residential units without the placing of 70 parking space off-street and on-site as required by 86441.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Attorney Joseph Macy, with offices at 209 Bedford Street in association with Arthur Frank. I'm now awake, so we can proceed. This is a continued hearing, as I know the board knows, and I would ask, as a matter of procedure, that the board adopt and incorporate by reference the evidence and information elicited and presented at the last meeting. We're surely prepared to go over it if we need to, but I'd still like the record to be reflective of what happened.
Excuse me, Attorney Macy, what?
I wasn't here.
I'm trying to think if we, if we listened, I'm trying to think if we listened or whether or not we just, it was a singular issue that stopped because we needed a letter from, I think it was Jim who asked the question, somebody asked the question, to get a letter from Corporation Council. We didn't take any evidence at that time, Attorney Macy.
I can start from the beginning, Mr. Joe.
You can, but let me read the letter that we got because it was central to whether or not you could go forward or whether or not the city sold this gentleman a bill of goods that couldn't be done.
City wouldn't do that.
I understand that, I don't believe the city would. So, in response to the request about whether or not the deed as, and I guess there were some ongoing negotiations about the number in the original deed of 30 up to 35, so it was a pocket issue, but it was the whole, but it was the whole how many units? So, Corporation Council gave it to, I think he's a special Corporation Council, Matthew J. Thomas Esquire, at the request of Corporation Council, Alan Rumsey, wrote, gave us a written letter, and I'll read it, it's a matter of, we'll make it a matter of the record, but let me read it out loud so we all know what Attorney Thomas said. So this is dated July 15, 2022, addressed to me, David R. Assad, Esquire, Chairman of the Florida Zoning Board of Appeals. Dear Mr. Assad, as you are aware, I serve as special counsel to the city of Fall River, here and after the city, and it is in that capacity that I'm writing this letter. As you know, the property at 158 Bedford, not, Attorney Macy, do you have the letter?
Yes, I do.
I'm reading, and if you don't have it, then let's give it to you. As you know, the property at 158 Bedford Street, Fall River, a former tax possession, was conveyed by the city to Weathersfield LLC, 29 Fremont Street, Chelsea, Mass. on January 11, 2021, by a treasurer's deed, recorded with the Bristol County Fall River District Registry of Deeds in Book 10413, page 277, here and after the Weathersfield deed. The Weathersfield deed contained a development rider, which was attached as Exhibit A, that set forth certain covenants and development timeframes that were intended to run with the land here and after the rider. On March 22, 2022, Glenn Hathaway and I met with Sarah Letterman of Weathersfield LLC and her local counsel attorney, Arthur Frank, to discuss the status of the 158 Bedford Street project. Glenn Hathaway is referenced, Glenn Hathaway is the building inspector for the city of Fall River. Due to the COVID-19 state of emergency, the project had been delayed, and Weathersfield was seeking an amendment of the rider to adjust the development timeframes. At the March 22, 2022 meeting, Weathersfield also discussed the need to obtain zoning relief relative to the parking requirement. It was my opinion at that time, and continues to be my opinion, that the rider did not prevent Weathersfield from seeking zoning relief, since the Fall River zoning ordinance allows such relief, and once granted, the project is deemed to conform to the zoning ordinance. After discussing this matter further with the mayor, city administrator, Corporation Council, and building inspector, it became clear that there was consensus that such zoning relief would allow the project to finally come to fruition. At that time, it was agreed that the development timeframes in the rider would be amended once the zoning relief, once the zoning relief was granted, and that the number of proposed units would increase from 30 to 35 market rate units. It was also agreed by city and Weathersfield that to remove any ambiguity as to the ability of Weathersfield to apply for appropriate zoning relief, to allow the redevelopment of 158 Bedford Street to be completed, as it had been proposed when Weathersfield deed was executed and recorded, the language of paragraph 1B of the rider would be stricken and replaced with the following language. So I guess this refers to this rider, subsection B. The grantee's development and use of the premises shall conform to existing zoning restrictions of the grantor for the premises. Notwithstanding the previous sentence, the grantee may apply for such zoning relief the building inspector deems appropriate or necessary to allow the project as described in Section 1, Subsection A, hereof, to be developed, provided this language shall not be deemed a grant of such zoning relief. Such development shall be completed within deadline set forth herein. Satisfaction of the foregoing requirement shall be evidenced by the issuance of a certificate of occupancy or a certificate of completion by the Inspection Services Department of the city of Fall River. Weathersfield also increased the performance bond being held by the city by $25,000. In light of the foregoing, it is my opinion that the, that the provided, that board is satisfied, I think it should be, in my opinion, that is provided that the board is satisfied, that a complete application has been received and that the requested zoning relief is appropriate, the current language of paragraph 1B of the rider does not prevent the board from granting such zoning release. Please contact me at this telephone number if you have any questions, very truly yours, Matthew J. Thomas Esquire. So that was the response to that question that we had asked. So Attorney Thomas's statement says, yes, we have the authority, he had nothing in the covenant that prohibited us from acting. So Attorney Macy? So Attorney Macy, you have authority to tell us anything you want.
Well, I, I mean, yeah, I understood that when we were last here, and Mr. Letterman, Letterman is here with me, that the plan was presented to the board showing a perimeter of 220 feet and 420 feet in terms of the number of parking spaces.
Yes, there was, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, so that is part of the record already.
We'll make it part of the record tonight, too. How's that?
With, with respect to the question.
Page two of what everybody, what everyone should have is the concentric circles that gives us the parking.
With, with respect to the specific question, now clearly appropriately before the board, we're here seeking a special permit to have fewer than the required number of parking spaces. As I think it shows in our petition, but it certainly shows on the plan, there are eight parking spaces that we can fit on this site, six regular parking spaces and two handicapped. The site does not permit, never permitted, isn't amenable to any, any further parking. We knew that.
You're constrained by the building itself and the lot?
By the building, which is, I don't know how many years old, we're constrained by the adjacent streets. I, I will suggest that the legend on the plan shows that within 220 feet, which isn't very far, there are 45 parking spaces, and within 420 feet, there are 168. What I think is significant about the parking spaces that we counted, and I believe, I thought Mr. Riem was here and explained to the board that he physically counted those spaces, but if you, and I've been driving up and down those streets, a number of those spaces are on-street spaces, number, a number of them are muted, but where they are is virtually, I won't say virtually unused, but from approximately Ash Street to High Street, there's on-street parking on the, will be the north side of the street. It's almost never used, and as a matter of fact, except for the one commercial business there, it probably won't be used because there are two little tiny stores that never seem to be open, and then there's the institutional use on the corner. As you go north, there's a row of parking, nobody ever parks there, and there's no reason for them to, because there's nothing there. Continuing west on Bedford Street, probably down to Purchase Street, there's very little use of on-street parking. When you turn the corner and go up Purchase Street, it tends to get a little busy because you do have some restaurants there. But I would submit to the board that in order to utilize this property, and I don't think I need to go into the history of this property, which frankly is, to put it mildly, tortured, and get it back on the road, or, and on the tax road, so inject needed use and pedestrian use, living people use in downtown area, I would suggest that it's entirely appropriate to grant the special permit we're asking for. And interestingly enough, the purpose or the, what we need to satisfy for this board to give us, grant the special permit, is that the use is either not inconsistent with public health or safety, or disjunctive, it's not both, or that the reduction or modification promotes a public benefit. And I suggest that injecting people into that area, which is, lack of a better word, a little desolate at night, is a, is a benefit. And more importantly, the further public benefit is we're getting this back on the tax road with the responsible developer, who has been vetted by the city council, willing to live with all the city's restrictions, and get that structure on the roads, useful, preserving the historic facade, which I think has been important in the past, and I'm pretty sure is important now, and frankly, getting on with it. We'd be happy, Mark and I would be happy to answer any questions you have. I, I think this is, I know we're here for zoning purposes, but I think this is an opportunity for the city to get this structure, which isn't going to last a whole lot longer. I mean, it requires an extensive renovation, which we will undertake. Everybody, I think, is aware of the asbestos problem, which will remediate, and the city didn't sell us a pig in the poke. We knew we were buying, but by the same token, it's a site constrained by itself. The, the city couldn't have expanded, you know, across the street or next door to make the lot or the building more palatable. We're willing to develop it as we said we would, but we certainly need this relief, which I submit to the board is most appropriate.
So under 86445, the special permit section is what the relief that we're getting, the board has the authority to act on. Any parking or loading requirements set forth herein may, may be reduced or modified upon the issuance of a special permit by the zoning board of appeals, as you alluded to, if the board finds that the issuance of a special permit, the reduction or modification is not inconsistent with public health and safety, or that the reduction or modification promotes a public benefit. Such cases might include A, use of a common parking lot for separate uses, having peak demands occurring at different times. I don't, whether or not there is such a common parking lot in the area, I, I go by Family Services and I see their lot, and I just say, anyway.
Let me just say, Mr. Chairman, that we've reached out.
No, no, I'm not saying that you have, you haven't. I'm just saying, I ask about it and say, you know, what's wrong with these people? B, age or other characteristics of occupants of the facility requiring parking, which reduces order usage. My understanding is the proposal is market rate units.
Yes.
So I don't know whether or not there's any restriction on that, so. C, peculiarities of the use, which makes usual measurements of demand invalid. D, availability of on-street parking or parking at nearby municipal facilities. I know there's a municipal facility down the street, there is some on-street parking and use of off-street parking. So we've addressed the off-street parking, eight of them, the use of on-street parking, it exists in the area, up High Street and down Bedford Street, a little bit on Purchase Street. So those are all the things for the board to consider. You're constrained by the building and what's there. I don't, you wanted to do the 30, I guess it's going to go to 35 units according to Attorney Thomas, right? 35 market rate units, increase from 30 to 35. So we, the board has the authority based on if we find that the reduction or modification is not inconsistent with public health and safety, or that the reduction or modification promotes a public benefit. So that's something for us to consider. Dan, I don't know if you have anything that you want to add about that parking?
I think the, you know, I think the legal aspect of it was, was resolved, and they afforded the ability to be here on the 45.
Attorney Macy, is there anything else?
No, we'd be happy to answer any questions, but I think we've satisfied, I think we've satisfied the.
Yeah, no, I think that was Attorney Frank's, that was Attorney Frank's statement, that other people in the area didn't want to deal with you.
Just for the record, there's a very extensive agreement between the city and, and Weathersfield as to when they're going to do things, what they're going to do, how they're going to do it, and, and I just, well, let me, let me see if I can put this the right way. I hope that this is the last best chance we have to rehabilitate that building, because it's, it's there now, but it's structurally difficult.
Okay. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Yes, sir, would you identify yourself, please?
I'm Linda Silva, 263 Pine Street. The, I'm on the board of directors of the Preservation Society of Fall River. I believe I submitted a letter.
You did, lots of time.
I'm just going to read it. Members of the zoning board appeals, the Preservation Society of Fall River's board of directors would like to express support for a special permit to provide parking relief and ensure the redevelopment of the historic Central Police Station at 158 Bedford Street is successful. The circa 1915 building is a historic part of Fall River's downtown and old central business district, at one time representing an informal local government complex together with the central fire station and the former second district court, in addition to the now demolished old city hall and federal post office and custom house. Its architect was Edward Corbett, an 1899 Derby graduate with no formal design training. Corbett also designed the Fall River Technical High School at 290 Rock Street, currently still serving the city as a resiliency preparatory school, as well as the second granite block also demolished. Given the construction of this building predated the advent of widespread automobiles, it would be detrimental to the community to hold this historic building to the same parking regulations as modern new construction projects. The Preservation Society's board of directors asks that special consideration be given to the special permit request for the Central Police Station so that it might continue to be a part of Fall River's downtown legacy. Sincerely, the Preservation Society of Fall River's board of directors.
Thank you.
And I think he submitted the vote.
I, I saw that, yes. Thank you for doing that. Is there anyone else in favor of this petition? Yes, ma'am.
I second that, but my concern is you went from 30 to 35. I just think it's a lot, you know, especially with the issue of the parking, that's all.
The 30 to 35 was outside of the purview of this board. The limited issue that this board has is just dealing with the parking. Whatever the city has decided in terms of changing, whatever, the 30 to 35, I have no control. This board has no control over that.
Yes.
Oh, madam, can we have you, please, for the record?
Natalie Mello.
Yeah.
Two major associates.
You got that?
Yes.
Okay. So, that was all in favor. Anyone opposed? No one opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I find that it meets both conditions, not only one, but both conditions, that it is not inconsistent with public health and safety, and that it is, the modification would promote a public benefit, so I move the grant.
Special permit, okay. Jim Corkins makes the motion that the board finds that the, the reduction or, and or modification, so it's reduction, is not inconsistent with public health and safety, and that the reduction and modification or or modification promotes a public benefit. Okay? So that's Jim Corkins' motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, John Frank, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Ricky Sahady.
Yes.
Dan DuPere.
Yes.
John Frank.
Yes.
Jim Corkins.
Yes.
Chairman of the side, yes. Okay. So that special permit is granted. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for appearing this evening, Attorney Macy.
Thank you. Happy to be here and be all the way.
So we're going to do this. Thomas's letter, the Preservation Society. Okay. That took a scare out. We did Burke, did we, Burke? No, we didn't do, no, we're doing Burke now. There's two left, right? Agenda item number one. Here we go. We're there. Thomas F. Burke, 1769 Robeson Street, Lot R415, a variance requirement to build and attach 22 by 24 garage addition, waving sided rear yard setbacks in an S single-family district. Good evening, sir. Identify yourself for the record and tell us what you'd like to do.
Thomas F. Burke, 1769 Robeson Street, Fall River, Mass. What I'd like to do is just extend the current garage I have now, just going backwards. We're already, it would go no wider, we'd just go back 24 feet in the backyard, so it wouldn't even be seen from the front of the house. We've already got the, the width, it's, I guess we're short a little bit on the side, but that's been there forever anyway, so we're not going to go any wider.
You're going to keep that same nine-foot side yard between you and Hathaway Funeral.
Correct.
And the rear yard's going to go 11.4 feet.
Correct, yeah, I got about 30, 35 now, I guess it is.
Yeah. Okay. And it's just going to be a garage? It's not going to be any? That's it? It's just going to be a garage?
That's it.
That's it. Okay. John's probably going to ask you whether or not the roof line's going to be consistent with the current.
No, fine.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going no higher than.
The aesthetics.
The way the roof is now, it goes this way, so it's just going to come off the back. So when you're looking at it, say, from the street, you're never going to even see it. It's not going to be any higher than what it's.
Single-story. It's not going any higher than what the one that's there.
No, no.
Okay. Unfurnished storage space for vehicles, lawn equipment, et cetera. Okay. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Members of the board, any questions for this particular project? 22 by 24 attached garage, the, the variance that's needed is going to be rear yard and side yard relief. Dan, is there anything we should know about it that we're missing? No? Okay.
Coverage, should be fine, coverage. Plan says 25, 25 is required, so should be fine.
Chairman, I move approval of the variance. I'll second.
Jim Corkins, variance motion, Dan DuPere, second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Ricky Sahady.
Yes.
Dan DuPere.
Yes.
John Frank.
Yes.
Jim Corkins.
Yes.
Chairman of the side, yes. Good luck to you, Mr. Burke.
Thank you. Thank you, Lord. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Agenda item number five, John Marshand, 12 Saudi Pond Avenue, Lot D222, special permit request to remove the pre-existing non-conforming structure from its existing foundation, construct a new structure on the existing foundation, and build an addition under 86426 for a funding. Okay?
Good evening, John Marshand. I live at 12 Saudi Pond Ave. Here tonight to request a special permit under Section 86426B to allow the reconstruction, reconstruction and alteration of an existing non-conforming single-family structure. 12 Saudi Pond Ave is located on the southern end of Fall River. It's entirely in the single-family S zoning district. The existing structure is located 2.4 feet at its closest from the abutting property line. I'd be looking to demolish the existing structure and reconstruct it, along with an addition to the north and the west. The addition portion of the, the project would conform to current zoning requirements. And, yep, that's, we'd like to answer any questions.
So you have this existing structure.
Correct.
Existing structure is going to get raised.
Yes.
Keeping the foundation. From that foundation, you're going to build this proposed two-story addition, 25, 25.5, 18 feet wide, 46 feet wide, and eight and a half feet off the, which, which showing up the existing structure to be removed, and reconstruction upon the existing foundation, proposed two-story addition. That's what you're planning on doing?
Yes, that's the intention. In my discussion with the building inspector, he noted that he would like to see some kind of structural certification of the existing foundation.
For that foundation.
So if it is deemed that repairs or replacement is necessary, I'd like to be able to do that as well.
Okay. Do we have to go to Tibbetson to get there?
Yes. Yeah, the state line runs right through the western portion of the property.
Then you have, my recollection, I just did some work around there, there's no water, you have a septic system, and you have your well or a shed well somewhere in the area.
Correct. Yep. I should note that the parcel to the south, number 14 Saudi Pond Ave.
Yes.
Is, is owned by my family as well, so the party most, I guess, impacted by the nonconformity would be myself and my parents.
Must be your father back there. He's handing, he's objecting. No. No, don't let me, no, he's fine. You used. You used, so 86425 is what you referenced, I believe, 426.
426B.
Nonconforming single and two-family structures, and you reference Section B. In the event the building inspector determines that the nonconforming nature of such structure would be increased by the proposed reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change, the Board of Appeals may, may, by a finding, which shall not require a supermajor, is that where we're going with on this particular project? Which shall not require a supermajority required by Massachusetts General Watch at the 48, Section 6, allows such reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change, where it determines that the proposed modification will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. So I don't have, I don't think I saw a letter from the building inspector on that point. Did you get, is there anything, Dan?
No, just his signature on the denial as being appropriate to file in that manner.
Okay. Because I don't want to go through that process and then have it bounce back and say that we didn't.
I can offer that, we had the discussion that this was.
Okay.
The only thing I would want to make sure that the board's aware of is that, and it may not be clear, that the applicant has the ability, when he's saying a two-story addition, the reconstruction of the existing could potentially be two stories as well. I don't want you to be only stuck to the one story.
Correct. No, no, two stories over, over the whole thing.
Over all of their construction.
My reading of what the petition is, everything goes, foundation stays, I want to do a two, I want it expanded, two-story.
Complete two-story and expanded, yes.
But it has to be, the foundation needs to be certified to the building inspector, and it's going to be site plan review.
Correct.
And it doesn't affect if the foundation needs to be replaced?
If the foundation, it'll be the same foundation, same footprint, same footprint.
Just a newer.
Just a newer.
Any building code compliant.
Yeah, no, I just want to be clear that I don't, I don't want a building on rubble stone, if, no, no, if it's found not to be.
You can save it, great, but if not.
I'd rather have 21st century technology than.
Your relief has no bearing on whether.
Has to be saved, right.
So is there anybody here, anything else, sir, you'd like to ask us, or tell us?
No, that's it, thank you.
Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Yes, sir?
My name's Robert Marshand, John's my son, and.
He wasn't really raising his hands, no, no.
I, we were talking before about, while they were talking about having a family. It's been, I've been there 35 years. My brother-in-law lived in the house, he recently passed away, and my sister-in-law lives in the other house. There's three of us on this compound, so we want to have John back. I can use some help cutting the grass.
Okay, we want to make that a condition. Grass cutting every other Saturday. Okay. Members of the board, you've heard the petition, we want it, and again, it's, we can have a finding that says, yes, we can do it, allows such reconstruction, where it determines that the proposed modification will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval, we find that it is not more substantially detrimental to the area.
Substantially more to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. Okay.
Second.
Second, John Frank. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Ricky Sahady?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes.
Thank you all.
I believe you're the only one that was taken in order.
There were some, there were some conditions, wasn't there? We had a, didn't we have a condition? Did you have anything?
No.
I just asked about the conditions.
No, the condition being site plan review and building integrity of the, those are the only things.
Thank you.
Good night, sir, good luck. John, citizen input, there were some people that were here before that were looking, there's nobody else here? Nope. No, there's nobody. We have proof of the minutes of the June 9, 2022, and June 16, 2022 meetings. Can I get a motion to waive the reading and adoption of the minutes as prepared?
No, no.
Ricky Sahady, any second on that motion?
Second.
Second, Dan Dupere, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Ricky Sahady?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. Any other business that we need to talk about before we adjourn?
No.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Dan Dupere, second.
Second.
Ricky Sahady, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Ricky Sahady?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Chairman Assad, yes.
The zoning board of appeals for July 21st, 2022 is hereby closed. Thank you all. Thank you.